We've scheduled a meeting in the Harlingen City Commission to order. And this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Mike Knessmar to provide any...
Yeah, holy God, holy mind, holy immortal, have mercy on us. Dear God, please bless this land with beneficial weather and rains, and please comfort the sick and the suffering. And please grant us peace in our lands, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, now and ever and unto ages and ages. Amen.
Please join me in the Fudge of Beligence.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome all of you here to our meeting tonight. I'm happy that you're here to participate in this regularly scheduled meeting of the City Commission. We have a lot of recognitions, but first, we're going to start. Do we have a form? Do you have an announcement?
Yes, I just wanted to announce that Commissioner Purple Shaw is not going to be here. He's undergoing a medical procedure and is unable to attend the meeting.
We're going to go down to item one, public announcement of events, or if there are any events that need to be announced.
Mayor, may I? We had a...I've had a group of concerned citizens contact me and want to announce an event. We've been hearing stories about our state hospital on Rangerville being cut in its budget next year. And so I've been getting a lot of calls lately from concerned residents and patients. I don't know if you all know this, we have...that's probably our 10th largest employer in Harlingen that employs over 600 people. And the concern is that they just built a new outpatient clinic, and the state and its wisdom are thinking about closing it. They just spent $12 million to us to open it. So what we have, we're having an event, a petition drive, so I'd like to announce that, you know, if you feel that we need to keep that place open, let's get involved, sign the petition. The mayor and I addressed this at our legislative agenda meeting this afternoon, and it was well received by our state legislator, Eddie Lucio III, and our state senator, Eddie Lucio Jr. So let me know. We're going to probably be scheduling something, maybe at Walmart or Chick-fil-A somewhere in town, and we need all the signatures we can get.
All right. Any other announcements? Hope?
Hi.
Hope Dabo?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners of the public. I want to welcome everyone, or invite everyone to come out for the Mexican Independence Day celebration next Friday at the municipal auditorium. It begins at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Everybody come on. Everybody, please come out for that. It's always a great event. Any other announcements of public events? All right, we're going to go on to item two, which is the recognition of the Literacy Center of Harlingen. And if Linda Collier and Don Cuddy can come on up here. I want to recognize this great organization, which has done so much for our community. If you come here and face that way, you're going to take your picture and put it on the city's website.
Oh, dear.
All right. And so we want to recognize, we want to take the opportunity to recognize the Literacy Center, which has done so much for our community over so many years to improve the lives of our citizens and our neighbors by providing them with the tools to learn English, providing them with the tools to learn, read, and write, and finding, in many cases, a pathway toward citizenship. It's just a great organization, and we recognize them tonight for being a recipient of the Impact Award presented by the Los Angeles Urban Policy Roundtable. The City of Harlingen applauds their continued efforts in providing valuable services to adults in the community with learning needs and obtaining a GED, citizenship, and other vocational skills. So again, congratulations for all the great work you do. You want to comment on the award and talk a little bit about how it took to get it?
Well, if I may. Well, first of all, thank you, Mayor Boswell, City Commissioners, and City of Harlingen for recognizing our organization this evening. I'm very pleased and honored to accept this recognition on behalf of the Literacy Center, but the work, and in the work that's being done there, I'm truly very proud of. These are two of my most valued board members, Lee Means, our board chair, and Don Cuddy, our board member. It wouldn't be possible without their hard work. I also want to mention that our volunteer tutors, who are the lifeblood of our organization, we simply wouldn't exist without them. My coordinator, Lucy Padilla, who is slowly down before us as we speak. And let's not forget the thousands of students who have passed through our doors, who, as Mayor Boswell said, have gone on to get jobs or better jobs. Some have gone on to college, some have opened their own businesses here in our community, while others have obtained their GED and citizenship. They are the reason that we continue to do this work, and they are what makes it all worthwhile. So we're proud of each and every one of them, and we're very honored to receive this award from the City of Harlingen. The Los Angeles Urban Policy Roundtable Micro Impact Award that we received recently was, I have to admit, I was a little suspicious when this lady called me from Los Angeles, who said she wanted to recognize our organization in South Texas, but it's a very legitimate and worthwhile organization. We were actually two, one of two organizations that were chosen in the month of August to be recognized for the work done in the nation. So this is a nonprofit group that recognizes organizations specifically in low socioeconomic situations to just say, "Thank you for the work that you do." So we were very honored to receive an award from Los Angeles, California, as we are honored to receive this award tonight. We thank you very much.
We're going to go on to item three, which is a series of proclamations. We're going to begin with Constitution Week, and we're going to have folks joining up And Susan, do you want to introduce your group?
This is Grace Johnson and Ann Roberts. They are the co-chairmen of our Constitution Committee for Audit in the Squala Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution.
Okay, and we have a proclamation to present tonight to you, whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17, 2012, marks the 225th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to report official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which it will commemorate it, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Chris Boswell, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through September 23 as Constitution Week in the City of Harlingen, and to hereby ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of liberties. So we want to thank you for all that the DAR does, and especially to remind us of things that we often take for granted, and one of them being the Constitution of the United States. So thank you very much.
I'd like to mention that there is a tradition in many places throughout the United States where they ring the bells of the churches, of the schools, and of various civic entities on Monday at 4 o'clock. I think that's Eastern time, right? It's all different. And if anyone can get their church to ring the bell in honor of the beginning of Constitution Week, that would be wonderful. We haven't done that yet in Harlingen, but I'd like to...
Great idea.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next item is a great item. This is also a great item, and I'd like to recognize, bring up, all of the Supergirls, the Harlingen Supergirls National Champions. Come on up here. In front of the mayor logo, and get your committee, leave some room for your coaches to stand behind you. They don't want to stand in front of you. They want them to stand behind you. I ask Commissioner Leftwich to come on up here with me to help present this proclamation. It's a very special, very special presentation we get to make tonight. Whereas the Harlingen Supergirls are a softball team consisting of 13 girls, age eight and under, and include, and as I say your name, raise your hands to all, now who you are. Victoria Abundis... Carla Belmontes, Caitlin Donas, Catherine Donas, April Garcia, Teresa Gomez, Cassie Leftwich. That name sounds familiar. Mallory Martinez, Savannah Mendosa, Chaslin Montemayor, Audrey Sias, Savannah Ramirez, and Kylie Reese. And whereas the Harlingen Supergirls coaching staff consists of Ramon Donas, Robert Mendosa, Sam Ramirez, and head coach Jason Montemayor. Whereas the Harlingen Supergirls qualify for the Pony National Tournament in Mandeville, Louisiana, July 24 through 29, 2012. My wife's actually the mayor of Mandeville. Whereas the Pony Girls Pinto subdivision, or Division National Tournament consisted of 28 teams from across the United States. And whereas the Harlingen Supergirls won the 2012 Pony Pinto... With the conclusion of victory over the 2011 defending national champions. And whereas the Harlingen Supergirls team is a shining example of female athleticism, competitiveness, sportsmanship, and a recipient of countless compliments on its behavior, both on and off the field. Now therefore, I, Chris Boswell, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, do hereby proclaim September 5, 2012, as Harlingen Supergirls National Champion Day. We are delighted to recognize each and every one of you, and thank you for representing Harlingen and bringing back the trophy. So congratulations to all of you. Want to say anything about all the hard work that it's taken to get here?
I'll say a few words. These girls, they work their tails off every day. We were out there for, in the hot sun. All these girls have been playing year-round, in the summer, in the fall, even in the cold, rain. We've been through it all. Never once have they quit. They've always stuck with it, and in the end, hard work does pay off. And that's the lesson we're teaching these girls, is that hard work does pay off. And we've all been working countless hours. We've put into this. Sometimes parents get mad because they get their kids home a little late. Eight, eight-thirty, nine, but you know what? It all paid off. I think every single girl here contributed. It was a very, very huge accomplishment. The teams we played up there were extremely tough, extremely tough. There was a couple of games there that we barely pulled out. After the game, we were extremely happy and proud of these girls for their accomplishments. But I just want to give one more round of applause to these girls. They are very proud of them.
We want to congratulate, and also thank the coaches and the parents. I know that it takes a lot of, it takes a lot out of the parents, too, to make all this happen, to get these girls out to Mandeville, Louisiana, in the middle of the summer. So congratulations to them.
Mayor, I'd just like to finish up by saying that having organized sports in the city is invaluable. This is a true testament to why this is a good investment for taxpayers to support our ballparks, soccer, softball, baseball. All of the organized sports activities that we have in the city help to mature our children. They'll be, they'll learn lessons from the accomplishments, the hard work that they put in. And I think that everybody should be proud that we have some of the best parks in the valley. We have the most parkland in the valley, and I think that it's a good investment, and we should all continue to support that whenever we can.
Congratulations. Great work.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And last but not least, we have a proclamation. So break our DSC says this at the end. Our celebration we have, we are so fortunate to have with us our Mexican consul, Muradofo Filantán Avianas, and his lovely wife. Come on up here. The consul is just a great friend of our city. He is a great friend of the City of Harlingen, and we are so, so fortunate and lucky to have them share so much of the culture of Mexico with us by bringing some wonderful entertainments and some wonderful traditions to our city next Friday night. But we have this proclamation, and I'll read it now. In celebration of the 202nd anniversary of Mexican Independence Day, or DSC says this at the end, and whereas in the early morning hours of September 16, 1810, Father Miguel Hidalgo Ipostia claimed his devotion on the altar of his church and gave his blessing to initiate the world independence through ringing the church bell. And whereas Father Miguel Hidalgo Ipostia took the flag with the image of the Virgin of Guadalupe, the national patron of Mexico since 1531, and declared the emancipation and birth of Mexico. And whereas on the evening of September 15, Mexicans throughout the world gather together to honor the memories of Mexico's national heroes and pay tribute to their patriots and confirm the national identity based on the commemoration of El Brito de Independencia. And whereas this special day is observed in the United States as a celebration of Mexican heritage and pride, and whereas DSC says this at the end, is an opportunity for Americans to come together in celebration and to acknowledge the many contributions made by Mexicans, Mexican-Americans, and Latinos in the United States. And therefore, I, Chris Boswell, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, do hereby proclaim on behalf of the Mexican consul of Mexico on September 16, 2012, as the 202nd anniversary of Mexican Independence Day in the City of Harlingen, and call upon all citizens to recognize this special day. Thank you so much. You look forward to next Friday night. You want to, you want to say some words?
Yes, yes, of course. First of all, I want to say that we are honored, my wife and I, for being here. This is the first time we are here in the City Commission. Let me say something regarding the day because of the days of the Constitution Week. The Mexicans redeveloped since 1810. Every year, all Mexicans all over the world, on September 15, the night, we are together to commemorate and to celebrate the Mexican heroes who provide us justice, liberty, and independence. And we are very pleased that here in Harlingen, the most important civic ceremony is celebrated in this particular way. Thank you very much for all your support, Mayor, for this event, and also for the Cinco de Mayo, the second most important one. By the way, the Cinco de Mayo started to make festivity in U.S. instead of Mexico. This is a real, a real history fun. So thank you very much for all your support. Thank you very much to all the visiting Commissioners, and also Ms. Hope Dabo and the Mexican colony. They are my friends that always are supporting the Mexican traditions and the Mexican ancestry in this particular region of the valley. Thank you very much. I would like to ask my wife to put this particular pin, Mayor, for you. This pin is the same like I'm wearing here. There is the two flags, the U.S. and the Mexican flags, as a symbol of neighborhood, partnership, and friendship between U.S. and Mexico.
You are our friends and our neighbors and our partners.
And also, my wife would like to give, you are to the City Commission. Please, please.
Let everybody be sure to come out next Friday. This auditorium starts at...
Seven. And if you want to continue the party, go to Bronsby, because we, Saturday at 7:00 PM, in the Art Center, we are going to make also the Mexican celebration. You are part of the...
All right, thank you again. Item four is the Neighborhood Clean Up Sweep, which is pro for West Taylor Streets, from West Street to F Street.
Mayor, we had another successful Neighborhood Clean Sweep. I just want to report that this was a district board, Commissioner Cooper developed this. Collectively, we picked up four tons of debris. Fifty-seven tires were picked up. As you can see, again, another successful event. This occurred on the first Saturday between West Oak and West Taylor Streets, West Street to F Street. And again, you know, just kudos to the staff and all the volunteers that were there. We continue to have successful clean sweeps, and we're going to get ahead of this in the community. We're going to, you know, this is a sustainable project that continues to clean our city. And I think that I just encourage anybody to follow the clean sweep schedules and come out and then help us participate in this, because they are making definitely a difference in our community and our quality of life. It's a whole lot better because of the efforts of our staff and our volunteers that come out and participate in this program.
Did we recycle the tires? Nope.
Well, yes. Not us, but we have a company that takes care of it.
Okay. We have a company down there.
That's another good report. Thank you. Item five is approved for regular meeting, but as far as first, are there any additions or corrections?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have the consent agenda, items six, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H. Is there a motion to adopt consent agenda on final reading?
No. I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Item seven is now to consider and take action, approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading adopting the City of Harlingen's collection for fiscal year 2012, 2013. Go ahead and ask the group to read the caption, and we'll have it all here.
An ordinance adopting the revenue and expenditure budget for the City of Harlingen, Texas for the fiscal year October 1st, 2012 through September 30th, 2013, the amount of $64,913,955, and $64,697,122, respectively. Provide for publication of the caption of these ordinance and retaining other matters relating to the Fort Villaln.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. The proposed budget for fiscal year 2013 comes about after several budget workshops and two public hearings, and it is as follows. The revenue budget totals is $64,913,955, and expenditure budget $64,697,122. Since the last budget workshop, we did make an increase to the red light fund in the amount of $44,565, and this is to address safety concerns along the Rio Honda Road due to increased traffic since the opening of the new school. That's been the only change that we've made to the budget. And under separate consideration later will be the EDC budget, community development, and waterworks and up here.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt it. Order is on for three. Second.
This is a balanced budget. It's a budget that doesn't cut back any services, expands some services, provides modest raises to your non-civil service employees and potential service employees, and so it's a good budget. Congratulations to the staff and the commission for putting this together. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Item A, consider and take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading adopting the abnormal tax rate for maintenance and operation fiscal year 2012, 2013.
After two public hearings, the proposed tax rate...
Mayor, do you want to read the bench?
I'm sorry, yes.
An ordinance fixing the abnormal tax rate for maintenance and operation of the City of Harlingen, Texas for the calendar year 2012 at 0.451862 per $100 valuation, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to Fort Villaln.
The proposed tax rate is .58827, and this is adopted in two parts. The first one being the maintenance and operation, which is .451862 for $100 valuation. This is the same tax rate as in the prior three years.
Mayor, I'd make the motion to approve the ordinance on first reading. Thank you. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item nine, consider and take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading adopting the 2012 abnormal tax rate for interest and sinking for fiscal year 2012, 2013.
An ordinance fixing the abnormal tax rate for interest and sinking payments for the City of Harlingen, Texas for the calendar year 2012 at 0.136965 cents per $100 valuation, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to Fort Villaln.
This is the second part of our tax rate for interest and sinking, which is .136965 for $100 valuation.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to adopt it. First, ordinance on first second.
Mayor, second.
Second.
All right. Again, this is, this is also good, good news, great news for our community, because it means we're not increasing our tax rate for...
Four years.
Four years. I think that four years ago, we actually lowered it a little bit, so it's been a number of years since we've raised the tax rate. Look around, actually, if you pay attention watching the notifications and the papers, other communities and other municipal governmental entities have not been so fortunate as to not have to raise, as to be able to keep the tax rate level. So this is a great thing for the community. And again, I congratulate the staff and the commission for putting together this budget and keeping the tax rate the same. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, motion carries. All right, and just to remind, you know, we actually spend a lot of time on this budget. The staff spends an enormous amount of time on this budget. They spend most of the time on the budget, on the workshops. This is not an easy thing to accomplish, even though the staff has made it look easy and we congratulate them again. Item 10, consider and take action to approve and adopt a resolution adopting the Harlingen Downtown improvement district 2012, 2013 fiscal year budget.
The Harlingen Downtown budget is adopted through a resolution, as are some of the other ones. This is the first one we have. It's the total for, is an exhibit A, total being $240,975 for expenditures and $240,975 It's, the total for, is an exhibit A, total being $240,975 for expenditures and $240,975 for end revenues.
This is just a resolution, so is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, like sign, motion carries. And downtown. Item eleven, consider and take action to approve and adopt a resolution accepting Valley International Airport's adopted budget for fiscal year 2012, 2013.
Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. Before you, today in your package, you have the proposed FY 2012, 2013 budget for Valley Regional, Valley International Airport. I'll go through it very quickly, and if you have questions, I'll be glad to answer any specific items that you may, would like for me to address. In this budget, the operating revenues for next year are estimated to be $6,717,500. That's an increase over this year by $42,600. The operating expenses for the airport before depreciation are $5,680,600. That's up $24,800 compared to this year. The net income for the airport before depreciation is estimated at $1,36,900, and that's up $17,800 compared to this year's budget. On the capital expense side, our budget is estimated $309,000 for those projects that you have listed on your paper. And then, on the capital improvement side, we have projects totaling $6836,000, most notably the improvements to our federal inspection services building at the airport for customs. That also includes airfield projects and replacement of one of our fire trucks at the airport. Cash flow, we're expecting to end this year and begin next year with a balance of $5 million in cash investments. And then, after, at the end of next fiscal year, we expect to, expect to have a balance of $6376,900 in the account. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution accepting the airport's budget?
I'm moving motion.
Okay. Motion second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, like sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries. All right, thank you and to your board also for your budget. Item twelve, the discussion and consideration of ordinance relating to restrictions on operating large vehicles near vulnerable road users and creating offense and discuss creation of a complete streets initiative committee.
Mayor, I brought this up with Commissioner Pepperchon as an agenda item last week. Unfortunately, there was an 11-year-old killed in McAllen riding his bicycle down the lawn, and I believe it was like first or second street. And the years passed, there, our administrative assistant at our office, her husband was killed riding a bike also. So, I think it, it's, it's about time we, we need to start improving our, our ordinances and, and making it safer for pedestrians in, in and around the city. Coming to City Hall this afternoon, from Stewart Place to here, you know, I had, I counted seven bikers and about 12 people walking in this heat. So, there is a need. Ms. Martin there, he's called me in one day, and we had coffee, and we talked quite, quite a bit about it, and he's made some presentations to the MPO, and he, he gave me a, a copy of this ordinance, and I just wanted to bring it up for, for discussion. And, and it's initiating what the mayor assigned me to do on the corridor planning. I'd like to, you know, start implementing some of these procedures. Commissioner Rose Galvin in Brownsville is, is starting to implement this also. And of course, with all their hike and bike facilities, I think we're at a point in the growth of the valley that we need to start considering some of these alternative modes of transportation, and it's, and it is cheaper in the long run. But, Ms. Park, if you want to say anything a little bit more about the ordinance, and I'm thinking maybe we need to have a committee also to start looking deeply into different aspects of this.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner. You know, the City of Harlingen has a wonderful hike and bike master plan that I've reviewed at length, and it's a good stepping stone towards a lot of plans for the future, a lot of things have, some things at least have begun to be implemented from that plan. The safe passing ordinance provides a foundation to build that plan on, which you've already started. If we don't provide for the safety of our citizens in participating in activities in trails and bike lanes that we may put in and that we're trying to put in, if we don't provide for their safety, people aren't going to want to use them. It's just that simple. And it's time that we look at this. The City of Fars already passed this. The City of Edinburgh has already passed this. Brownsville, I understand, is looking at it as well. McAllen has begun to look at it. Several other cities in the state, Hueco has passed this, El Paso recently passed this, Corpus Christi recently passed this. So, there, and that's just a small list. There's, there's more. So, it's, it's a, it's a foundation to build our park system. It's a foundation, this ordinance to build and implement our hike and bike plans to provide safety. Because if we can provide the safety for the citizens and educate our public in a, a safe passing ordinance, you know, where a vehicle has to give somebody at least three feet of clearance, a truck, a large truck has to give them at least six feet. Many states have passed this. The state of Texas has almost passed it recently. Colorado has this law in place statewide. Wisconsin has this law in place statewide, and quite a few others now have, have looked at it or have passed it as well. And as you do this, I mean, it, it will encourage, as we're building our hike and bike drills and we're implementing these things, it's going to encourage citizens to be able to use these, these more. I've talked with the MPO at length about this, and they've supported it. We have discussed plans for, if the ordinance is passed by the city commission, to look at some organizations like Bike Texas that will provide free literature, that we can help start an education program to educate our public on, on this ordinance. If you pass it, we can also look at some possible grants that we can apply for that will provide public education so we can go into our schools, go into our colleges, and any other events that we can so that we can educate our public on, on bicycle and pedestrian safety and hopefully this ordinance, if you consider it.
I just want to see what Commissioner feels about Commissioner Castillo has brought the things to attention on the bike train.
And I, I think that's something certainly we, we need to look at in the city. I, I agree with Commissioner Arroyo, and would this partner as well, like with, because I know recently I've been talking to staff about really looking comprehensively at our safe routes to schools, the sidewalks, necessary, because you have a lot of kids right now going to school or walking down streets that are, and it's very unsafe. I think it's one of the things that we, we're seeing in some of the newer, newer schools. So, I'm, I'm stating that to say that I, I agree wholeheartedly with that, that we need to have staff and have, maybe form a committee that we can look at a good comprehensive overarching plan for the whole city that would encompass, you know, the safe conditions for bicyclists, our pedestrian traffic, and then work into our community, sort of like a, a, a citywide plan of, of providing a venue for people to go out there and safely run and jog. A lot of people nowadays are doing that on the streets, and, and unfortunately, that's what's happened with that. I, I would agree, anything that we can do as a city to help improve that, we can go about that very comprehensively, and hopefully we can do something pretty quickly, especially with the kids going to school.
Yeah, and I have to, I have to say, I agree with Commissioner Castillo. I mean, obviously, we've got a lot of pedestrian traffic and, you know, we've got a progressive city, and people want to exercise, they want to, you know, they want to stay in shape. And not only that, we have people that, you know, just do the economics of our community that need to, you know, they're, they're foot, they're pedestrians where they go, you know, they, they cycle where they go, and those are the folks that are most vulnerable in the community. And I, after looking at this ordinance and, and looking, but it doesn't always, it doesn't just include pedestrians and cyclists, it just includes professionals who are, who are, you know, like tow truck drivers, and, and that kind of struck out at me because about three weeks ago, I had a, a school friend who was a tow truck operator, and he got, he was killed while hooking up a car because somebody in the roadway ran over him as he was trying to get back into his truck. But this is, this is a good ordinance, and I think it's a, it's a great first step, and I think it'll, it's pretty, it's pretty comprehensive. It includes a lot of areas that you don't think about when you're adopting an ordinance like that, and I think this is, this is probably some best practices that have come together, and this is, like I said, is a comprehensive ordinance, and I think it's, it's something that we should move forward with as a commission for the community.
Portland, Oregon is a gem for many reasons, and one of it is, is it's the friendliest bicycle community in the country.
Yes, sir.
You know, it's just one of the things that make a community a nicer place.
I will say one thing for the city, though, that it were the last, since we presented the 2003 bond proposal to the citizens, which was approved, we have done lots of sidewalks in the community. And as you point out, our, our hike and bike master plan is very comprehensive in, in terms of inclusiveness for all areas of the city, and we've got a big project coming up, and I think that that's going to, that's going to benefit as well. It should pull some folks off the streets, but still, there are people that not, they're not just out there doing it for their health, they're doing it because they have to be. There are schools, the school owners, the students, and people who need to, to walk, cycle wherever they're going, whether it's for work or the school.
I have to agree also with Commissioner Leffler on that. I've looked at some of the, the studies and the master plans that the staff has developed over the last couple of years on the sidewalk systems to help improve pedestrian safety and so forth for students coming to and from schools. And I understand a lot of that's already been pre-approved by, by the state level as far as possible, if you weren't funding it.
We submitted the plan, and we're waiting for your approval.
So, we have some of these plans already sort of pieced together throughout the community, but that's, I think that's where we're all stressing, that we do this very comprehensively so that it, it marries very well with a lot of the other initiatives, and I think we all want the same thing, so.
Okay. Well, Commissioner, do you see anything wrong with, I think, the city attorney review of proposed ordinance?
I'd like to have the staff review it, and we need to add some more teeth in it and possibly, you know, get it passed in the next, next...
I was asking Commissioner Castillo, do you see anything wrong with going forward with, with just going ahead with this ordinance and, and working on the rest of the parallel order?
Well, here, here's the thing, I should, the same thing that, that Commissioner, the reason you're saying is that I think we, we need to look at this definitely for the merits of this one ordinance, but we need to really study it further to make sure that it's comprehensive from the standpoint that it doesn't start conflicting with some of the, the things we want to do through development of neighborhoods and so forth. I think if we do that legwork upfront and look not only at this, but how this matches up with some of the other initiatives that are also very much needed so that we don't have to redo something down the road.
That's true. I mean, this is pretty much a start, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is how everybody faced their, their ordinances from. And, yeah, but I'd really like to, this was the sample he gave to me, I'd like the city staff to look at it.
Let me propose, let me propose this. Why don't we ask the, the city attorney to bring back a, a proposed ordinance? There may be some alternatives, I don't know, in looking at the other, looking at other ordinances that other communities have adopted. And at the same time, go ahead and let's bring back, and have a presentation about these other issues, these other issues about where we are with respect to sidewalks, where we are with respect to the hike and bike lane master plan. I think, you know, I'm familiar with it, and I don't know who else is familiar with that hike. It's very comprehensive, it's very expensive, we're in a long period of time, but fortunately, we've got a first leg about to, hopefully about to break ground in, in January. So, lots of things, there are lots of moving parts of this. I think it'd be good to, as Commissioner Castillo said, bring, bring back all of it and, and then see what else we need to do at the same time as looking at this ordinance. Would that be acceptable to everybody?
Mayor, just for the public, BikeTexas.org/completestreets, look that up. It's very interesting, there's some good video in there, good information, and just, I, I think that'd be helpful for everybody here.
All right, you have, you have a minute?
Yeah.
Very soon.
Yeah, during more, yeah, just, just, just offering up, just offering up some observation. I, I too survived yours as a young biker, and, and I recognize now, you know, just how dangerous it has become since then. Anyhow, the point is, I just was required to do some training on distracted driving, and it would, I think it would be important to include not just distracted driving, but distracted walkers and distracted bicyclists. It's, it's a big problem. And another thing that you should make the opportunity, reach out to the professional drivers of all the different associations that are local, available to you from the post office, your local delivery drivers. These people know they have to survive and they have to maintain their employment because they avoid hitting people, and I just think it would be a, a very unique situation that you can help draw up a very good plan.
All right, thank you. We'll ask the staff to bring this back within a month, except with the presentation. Item 13 is consider and take action to approve the preliminary ranking of the engineering consulting firms for professional consulting engineering services for various roadways, including design of storm sewer, water, wastewater, and log roadways and authorize to Serna Assistant City Manager or external to negotiate a contract with an high-strength firm.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. In June 2012, the staff received 11 responses to our, our FQs for various roadway designs. There was a staff review committee of five, Assistant City Manager, City Engineer, Assistant City Engineer, Entering Finance Director, and the Planning Development Director. Based on the committee's evaluation, staff is requesting approval of preliminary rankings and authorization to allow Assistant City Manager Dan Seb to negotiate a contract. Should the highest-ranked firm fail to negotiate, we go to the next highest.
Okay.
The order of ranking was have Associates, L and G, and Brownell Associates.
Is there a motion to approve the preliminary ranking and authorization for Serna to negotiate? Got a motion? And we have a second?
Yeah.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, motion carries. Item 14, consider and take action to approve without a resolution authorizing the Harlingen Police Department to submit the 2013 selective traffic enforcement program, step grant to Texas Department of Transportation to fund the hiring of officers on a no-time-advantage system for speeding, safety restraint, DSI laws, and intersection traffic and travel enforcement.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Our item is exactly that, just to seek permission to in fact submit to the Texas Department of Transportation for the 2013 step selected traffic enforcement program grant in an amount close to $90,000, and it will be to target those items you just mentioned, speed, intersection violations, child safety restraints, seat belts, and DWI laws.
Mayor, I'd like to make a question. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We, we want the grants. We want you to get those grants.
Right, right. We're trying.
That's good, thank you. Item 15, consider and take action to appoint a representative as the official member and an alternative member to the need to stop by a board director for fiscal year 2012, 2013.
Mayor, I'd like to recommend Commissioner Metzger to be appointed as a representative.
Who?
Commissioner Metzger.
You want to be on both? It's, it's either you or Commissioner Pepperchon.
I have no problem serving again.
Oh, you don't want to?
Yeah, I, I'm always in that area, so. Okay, then I'll, I'll amend it and recommend that Commissioner Arroyo and Mr. Metzger would like to be the alternate.
Sure.
All right, that's a motion. All right, that's a motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Dis opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item sixteen, consider discuss the proposed by the policy planning organization agreement in the state of Texas. Harlingen Assembly of NPO Policy Committee and the City Harlingen take action to authorize staff to modify the agreement for required fiscalization. City Harlingen hire evaluate terminate the NPO transportation.
Mayor, this, uh, this matters back on the agenda because the current agreement is, is, it's expiring. So the staff has been working to renegotiate essentially the entire agreement is, is acceptable as it exists, but there is one provision that we wanted some, um, to discuss with the Commissioner and get some authority from the Commissioner to go back and negotiate. In the previous agreement, we, uh, we had direct authority from the, uh, in the agreement for the City of Harlingen to, uh, hire the, uh, hire and supervise the activities of the transportation planning director. The current agreement that the state has sent down with amendments, uh, sort of divides that authority with the committee and, uh, uh, we don't think that's a good idea. We think we need to try to retain, uh, direct authority over the hiring of the director and supervising of activities. Uh, 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 Assistant City Manager Gonzalez is also really, uh, more knowledgeable on this than I am and I've asked him to participate because he is actually on that committee and he can add some additional comments.
Now, one of the things that we're asking the council to make a recommendation to the MPO to change the agreement because the agreement is actually between the MPO, the state and, and also the city as a fiscal agent. Um, the state has actually recommended a language that will read like this, "The MPO Policy Committee in coordination with the fiscal agent will participate in the hiring, evaluation and termination of the MPO transportation planning director." We would like it to read similar to what the old language was, which is, uh, "The City Department of Electricize sole responsibility to hire, supervise, evaluate and terminate the MPO transportation planning director." That is what the current contract says and we'd like to leave it at that rate. Um, of course, every time we've had an, an issue with the planning director, we have always invited the board policy to provide input. They've never been completely closed out of the, the process even though the, the contract doesn't call for coordination with the policy board. Uh, the mayor and I did express that to the, uh, the policy board and they pretty much agreed. Tech Stop said that we'd come back with some language, which is what we just proposed, uh, which is what, which is what they came back with. We'd like to actually make, um, some comments to the policy board with recommendation from the council to leave the language the way it was before.
Could you repeat those, um, two sentences?
What they were, sure. Um, the proposed language in the contract would, would read as follows. The MPO-
Let me, let me, let me explain this, let me take the crack at it, uh, to, because I don't think, maybe some folks don't really know. We, the MPO director has been, uh, through this contract, has been, uh, hired by our staff and has been supervised by our, uh, by our personnel. Previously it was the planning director that supervised the MPO director.
Yes.
Now I think it's you as the assistant city manager, uh, directly supervised. This is an employee, this is a person that is housed in our facility, in one of our city offices. Uh, we, we, we apply all of our HR standards and, uh, everything and treat it basically as, as employee in, in the city, even though they're funded by, uh, the state funding, uh, Tech Stop funding for the, for the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Yes.
Uh, and that director is responsible for doing the work of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, who serves cities in the Harlingen Assembly of District, uh, and is represented by the county, but I, I don't, there, there's just, leaving the supervision of the employee up to this committee, that means maybe once a month, just is, I don't see that working. I don't think it will work. I don't, I think they need daily supervision, uh, or, you know, weekly periodic supervision and they, somebody, they have to answer to somebody that's not, uh, appointees that come and go. And so for the continuity, you know, I would recommend that we not, uh, agree to this language and that we try to retain the structure that we have, uh, because, uh, it, it just from a supervisory management, you know, thing, it just doesn't work.
And I'd like, I'd like to add, that I, I agree with the mayor, that to have a board hiring by or choose this person, it may lend itself to political maneuvering of some of the board members and they may try to position the person instead of having the bureaucracy out of it and put it into, you know, employment with the city.
Now, I was just getting to State Mayor, I'm just agreeing with, I think, your, your position as well as, uh, Commissioner Leffler, which is I think I, I would recommend we go with staff's recommendation and we send back the, our, our desire that the language stayed the same.
Second. Okay, then it's a motion in the second. Any other discussion?
Uh, just Brownsville, City of Brownsville does that, is that, is that how they work?
Well, right, right now they report to the city, but they're going to change it so that that particular person will report to the board, but keep in mind that the Brownsville appeal pretty much just covers the city Brownsville.
Right.
So their Brownsville representatives may be, uh-
Kadokl County's under the L R G D C.
Yes, but they cover the entire county. Now, they've just lost a part of their MPO in Mercedes to this MPO, but, yes, because of the, uh, because of the changes in census population. Now, that area that we're going to cover doesn't have, we believe, any, any housing units in it right now, it's just, uh, vacant property, but it is inside the city of Mercedes. And we're going, we're going to through the process take over that particular section, including sections within the Brownsville city limits and a button against the city of San Diego, we're going to take that over as well. Now, those areas do have populated areas that we're going to, so.
One, uh, other thing, Mayor, Tech Stop Commission last week just approved some more funding for hiking bike trails, but it's gonna be going through MPO.
Through the MPOs.
Um, I think that's a hard decision that we need to be able to take control of.
Commissioner, on another note, the MPO right now is working on a bicycle road study only on roads.
Right.
But it's on the entire MPO boundary, which includes San Diego, I think that comes all the other cities.
Yeah, but, but that funding is just gonna be going through, not through the cities. The decision will be through the MPOs.
And if you could please repeat the, the two, uh, sentences.
Okay. The one that the Commission just voted or made a motion to approve will read as follows.
Thank you for your time.
Right, exercise, exercise all responsibility to hire, supervise, evaluate and terminate the MPO transportation planning director. That's for the City Department of Health and Control.
Okay, any other discussion? Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Dis opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item seventeen, consider take action to approve the understanding of the Texas National Guard, the City Harlingen operation crackdown.
Mayor, Commissioner, this is an MOU, it's similar to the MOU that, uh, that we had in place, uh, last year when the National Guard came in. Uh, this year the National Guard is scheduled to come in September seventeenth to the twenty-seventh. Uh, they have identified twenty-four properties and twenty-eight unsafe structures and, uh, we are asking the approval of this MOU so we can move forward with that.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the understanding of the Texas National Guard.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Dis opposed, like, signed, motion carries. When are they gonna be here for soon?
September the seventeenth, man, for two weeks.
That's great, all right. Out, out of eighteen, consider take action to approve a request from Amadeo Toledo Junior for supplemental certificate of public necessity and convenience to add two additional taxi cabs to his existing fleet, as per the City Department of Taxi Cabs, with that section one seventeen point forty-six, additional taxi cabs issued to supplemental certificate.
Um, Mayor, Commissioners, uh, Mr. Toledo is, uh, the current owner of Harlingen Taxi Cap and is requesting a supplemental certificate to add two additional cars to his fleet. In February two thousand seven, the Harlingen Taxi Cap was registered under a partnership consisting of Amadeo Toledo, Silvia Sandoval and Jose and Morales. In January twenty-first, twenty-ten, Mr. Jose Morales resigned as a general partner and on March the eighteenth, twenty-twelve, the Silvia Sandoval, um, who had a certificate for two cabs died. And Mr. Toledo would like a supplemental certificate to add the two cars to, to get back into business the way, the way it was with four cars when this is, um, uh, Sandoval was, was, uh, alive. So he has submitted all the, um, information, he's, he, uh, um, filled out the application, the application has been reviewed by the police department. However, because of city ordinance, the city ordinance requires that any taxi cap business wanting to add more cars to their fleet, they must go through the city commission for approval. And this is the reason why Mr. Toledo is in present, sorry, make this request to the commission.
I might add, Mayor, that, uh, we, I met with, uh, Mr. Toledo, with the city secretary and, uh, and as she pointed out, he currently has a certificate of public necessity and convenience, but, uh, he only has it for two vehicles and so, uh, the ordinance indicates he must come in for supplemental certificate to get the two additional. It wouldn't be any, it wouldn't be any net more vehicles because, because when he was operating, he was a partner who had two, they had four. But, uh, she, she's gone and so he's now down to two again. He would like to, he, he's indicated he can't operate efficiently without, uh, those two vehicles he got before, so it's really just bringing him back to where he was previously.
Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve the request on second.
Any discussion?
I wish you all the success in all the work.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Dis opposed, like, signed, motion carries. All right, thank you all. Item nineteen, consider to take action to terminate the agreement between the City Harlingen and American Republic Corporation. The complication of City Harlingen ordinances and authorize staff to solicit proposals for recomplication of City Harlingen total ordinances.
Um, Mayor, this is an item that was brought up during the budget workshop. We're wanting to, uh, we can do a reclassification of the existing ordinances so that we can, so that they can recommend to us whether our ordinances are up to compliance, state compliance and, um, the city commission, um, approved nine thousand dollars in the street budget and then the second phase would be, um, funded through the budget, through the next year's budget. So it's really just to start the process.
Is much overdue, Mayor. I make a motion that we move to approve staff's recommendation.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Dis opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item twenty, board appointments. Any board appointments, Danny?
Not, Mayor.
No board appointments, so we've got a item twenty, which is communication.
I have to, Mayor, and it's, uh, Jose Rubio.
Evening, Mayor and City Commission. I have, uh, quick concerns. I have a concern about a retired Harlingen police officer hanging out in city parks with his, uh, with males when approached by HPD officer, makes it known that he was aware of the park rules, that he was being harassed by HPD. This is ongoing at night and, uh, I think the officer's taking advantage of his, uh, the retired officer's taking advantage of the, of the consideration of the laws that that he was, uh, that he used to at one time, uh, enforce. Gambling, tonight we're gonna discuss gambling. There was a public hearing over this subject and I don't think it was conducted properly according to the video as presented. This gambling is about money, corruption, politics. You will decide whether you allow organized crime to flourish in this, in Harlingen tonight. I'm against the gambling. Number three is code enforcement. You have political signs being spread out by at least one political candidate who's violating the park rules. That means this opens up the doors for anyone and everyone else to violate the rules, so so be it. Thank you.
Next.
Next is, um, Mr. Moore, Jerry Moore?
Evening, uh, Mayor, Commissioners. Jerry Moore, Town Night Drive. Um, first of all, I'd like to bring up the citizens' communications being stifled and put at the end of the meeting. Uh, I think it's, um, time that we move back to the beginning of the meeting as it should be under the Constitution. You're denying, uh, many people the opportunity to speak. Uh, on the, uh, idea of, uh, information here on the, uh, businesses coming, uh, if you look back at most of the new businesses here in Harlingen in the past year or so, uh, most are drinking establishments and adult entertainment. Now there's the gambling establishments. I think each of you need to do some serious contemplation as to the direction you're allowing Harlingen to go with, which is straight into the gutter. Please send this agenda item back to the table. Um, and then let its, uh, let's get some ordinances written before the folks rename this place Hades. And by the way, last meeting, I did raise my hand several times, stood up on an attempt to speak and was denied by the mayor. So, um, you continue to refuse and takes, uh, the citizens' input, which is crucial to our Constitution, it's crucial to us as a, as a society and, uh, I think it's, um, time we get more citizens involved for everybody to participate here. Thank you.
Is there any other citizen communication?
That's good.
All right, we'll go to item twenty-two, um, these two, uh, executive session items, there may be action afterwards. Item twenty-two, uh, post-executive session regarding the following items pursuant to section five fifty-one point zero seven-two, Texas Government Code regarding the sale and value of real property newly described as nearly point four-nine-eighth acre tract out of block eight to replace subdivisions to survey four-point, uh, Harlingen County, Texas, as recorded by five page six, the map records of Harlingen County, Texas, they accept zero-point, three-acre tract, the city of Harlingen by deed reported by one sixty-four, page one ninety-three, official records, Harlingen County less than additional point three-eight acre tract in the Palm Fork Drive right away, be pursuant to chapter five fifty-one, subchapter D, P D C A, Harvard Code, section five fifty-one point oh-seven-one, consulting seat, legal advice from the city attorney in charge, pressed by Amado Ragaboo for a specific use, permit to allow adult business in the nature of sweepstakes, gaining, as our motion going executive session.
So, Mayor.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, we're now executive session, we'll go back to the, let's go back to the back room. Campus set up. Okay, items, on items twenty-three and twenty-four, the Commission will take no action, so the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
No, no action. They can, they can table this, racketeering and racketeering, you know, it's illegal and it's illegal. We could do the ball.